Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cortez.
Here.
Councilmember Youngblood.
Here.
Councilmember Nicely.
Here.
Mayor Cartwright.
Here.
And David Ring is out on vacation today.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
A second.
Mayor Nicely.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Nicely.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez.
Aye.
Councilmember Youngblood.
Aye.
And Mayor Cartwright.
Aye. All right. You know, I am unaware of any recognitions or proclamations. Did anything sneak in at the last second? Okay? All right. Next, we'll move to matters of interest for council. Jenny, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Carol and the staff and all of the, you know, our community partners for the National Night Out. I wasn't able to be here, but I appreciate that you do that. It helps our community connect and be safe. And, oh, oh, one more thing. I do have one more thing.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so in preparing for tonight, I had to go back through a bunch of history documents, strategic planning documents, and, and I, as my role as Executive Director of the Chamber, I would use these documents as a guide of what the town wanted. And we got to have a workshop in March and talk a little bit about our 2020, sorry, I got nervous, 2021 to 2026 plan, but I think we need to do some more talking now that we have a new town manager, and I'd like to put it on the agenda to discuss if that's something you guys would like to do in the future, too.
Are we good with that?
Excellent, yeah. I definitely agree with that. I thought you meant go to me, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, so, Amanda, you were good with that?
Well, I just put it on there.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, if you would direct, if you would direct staff to put that on the next agenda? Do you have consensus?
Thank you.
My second thought that, that sounds, that's good.
Okay. Now, did you have anything?
Oh, yeah. So I just wanted to share that the town has been working with first responders, the traffic, and all that put together, and they're developing the committee, they're going forward, developing the committee for the Public Safety Committee, and they're in the midst of looking over traffic codes and things like that, and how to make the town better in terms of traffic and public safety, and I just wanted to mention that because I'm very excited that it's actually getting going here, yeah. So I will go back on mute, but I just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you. Amanda, did you have anything? Okay. With that, we'll move on to Town Manager's Report. Wes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna go ahead and invite Carol to give an update on National Night Out before I start my report, if she's ready to do so.
Well, actually, it went very, very well. We had a large attendance, we had purchased food and meals for 300 people, and we made it through all of that. Our response from law enforcement and first responders was, was, was very, very good. Deputy Billidoo was able to get us a drive, a flyby over with a helicopter, and the kids all seemed to have a really great time. I'm very, very pleased with it.
Great.
Well, thank you. With that, so you have a new packet. I provided you the month of August Town Manager Update. There's a couple items I just wanted to highlight for the council and for the community members here. On the Finance Department, I mean, this, I think, is, we're all aware, with Rogers' passing, there's been a lot of challenges, and, and we're very pleased that we have Nick here, who's the interim Finance Director for us, who's with Edie Bailey, and has been helping us work down the path to, to get things organized again. In that vein, we actually worked with them, and we've created a Finance Director job description that's on your agenda tonight for council to approve, and if council approves it, the goal is to go out with a recruitment for the position and hopefully have somebody on board by November. Timing-wise, it's probably good, because we also received notice from our auditing firm that we have a long history with, that they're no longer continuing their services with local governments. So we had to go out to an RFP for services as well, which is probably good, because the, the RFP, we anticipate that what's gonna happen is that we're not gonna be able to start our audit until after the new year, which still gives us time to complete it within a year of the end fiscal year on there. So that will give time for the new Finance Director that comes on board to get a little more acclimated, to work with Edie Bailey and the Town Manager and staff, so that we can have a, a good audit coming forward. I understand some of the proposals we've got now are from companies that do a very thorough, deep dive into audits, which is good for the town as well, too, 'cause it'll help us come out with some better policies and procedures and those other things that can guide us forward in the future. Other item I want to highlight is the PCWA East Side Canal. I know on August 3rd, the PCWA staff presented to the PCWA Board several options in here, and they're highlighted in your, your packet here, and I'm not gonna go over them, but I think they're having a subsequent meeting later this month to kind of make a final determination in there. I'm happy to answer questions, but I don't feel it's really appropriate for me to kind of go over what PCWA is talking about. I just wanted to make sure it was highlighted for the council and for the community. The last item I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is that, you know, staff and the school district met with Deputy Billidoo's assistance of kind of us working to collaborate to talk about how we mitigate traffic. As we know, I think school starts next week here, if I'm correct, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So I haven't had the pleasure of experiencing the traffic, but I hear it's, it's wonderful on the back end. So when we met, it was interesting to, we learned that the school had already had a bunch of work done for the traffic engineer to look at mitigating some of the onsite traffics. They were looking at increasing their capacity to have cars onsite. In fact, one of the schools, they were talking about being able to queue up 90 vehicles onsite to relieve some of the traffic on the main roads, which is good. In that same discussion, we talked about doing a comprehensive downtown traffic mitigation study that would include Taylor, King, Brace with Costco and other businesses coming in to look at what is the right traffic treatments for the town roads, how we can complement what the schools are trying to achieve, and that whole process. What that, but it also means that the Walnut Street signal design that we were going through currently is on hold.
Right.
Because that's one of the things we want to make sure, is that's the right treatment for that intersection at Walnut and Taylor. So hopefully, we'll get through all this process, we'll come up with some good strategies, come back to the council with some proposals, some, some ideas to adopt a plan, how we, we're not gonna eliminate traffic, but how we can reduce it overall in the back end. With that, that is my report, unless council has questions.
Counsel, you have any questions? No. Wes, I appreciate that holistic approach, because, like I say, we did approve that stoplight down there, but the thing is, is that if there's another treatment, like you said, that would be more appropriate in consideration of this whole line through the corridor, then, of course, we need to look at that, and instead of just making the assumption, right, that the light is the, the best way to go. So I appreciate you taking that holistic approach.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to Loomis Library and Community Learning Center Librarians' Report. Sarah.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to start out by just talking about our summer reading program. We, it ended officially on July 22nd, I believe, was the final date, and so we have our statistics from that and our numbers. Total, we had 260 people participate, and we had 775 people attend 21 events over the course of the five weeks, so very successful. And ultimately, we had 133,000 minutes logged, of reading logged, so it really got our community and especially the children in the community reading. So the 133,000 minutes is about 2,000 hours, or almost 92 days of reading, so I'm very happy, very pleased with those numbers. Some upcoming events, August is our sort of month to pull back and take a breath, so there's not as many events as normal, but we still are going to have our Storytimes every Friday at 10:30. The UC Master Gardeners will be at the library on Saturday, the 12th, that's the Saturday, at 10:30, to talk about cool seeds and crops and vegetables. And then, as some of you may have heard, but maybe not everybody, Deborah, who has been a longtime employee of the library, very beloved figure at our library, retired at the end of July, and so we are going to have a reception for her on the 23rd at 5:00 PM, and everyone is invited, and that will also give you a chance to meet Brittany, who is our newest staff member. And then, we're also going to have Read to a Dog on August 26th at 10:30, as usual. And then, in September, we're going to sort of start picking up again. We're going to have, we have on the calendar a bug bonanza put on by the Placer County Mosquito and Vector Control. They're gonna come with some bugs and insects, creepy crawly things. That's September 9th at 10:30. And then, we're also going to be picking up some more of our regular programming and things that we haven't seen in a while. So in addition to things like Spice Club, we're also going to bring back Japanese Storytime, our Manga Club, and Girls Who Code, which we haven't done since last fall, so we're excited to bring those, those back. And then, in honor of school starting, I just wanted to go over some of the things that we do have for our students. We have online resources that can be accessed at home, including our ProQuest databases, which are sort of Wikipedia meets encyclopedias, you know? It's got all of this information, but it's fact-checked, it's peer-reviewed, and it's kept up to date. So it's not like Wikipedia where anybody can go in there and just, you know, edit the article. So great for writing research papers or learning about a new subject, and that's for all ages, for elementary and high school. And then, for the younger kids, we have something called Scholastic Book Flicks, which is a program through Scholastic that pairs a fiction book with a nonfiction book on the same topic, and it's, they animate it, so it's fun and engaging, and there's also games and learning activities that go along with each book. And so, it's, it's really fun for the little ones, and, like I said, it can be accessed at home, it can be accessed on an iPad, or what have you, totally free with your library card. And then, finally, we have our A to Z World Foods Database, which is a collection of recipes and information about food from all around the world. So it's especially great for people who are interested in Spice Club, and you can learn more by going there, and, once again, free to use with your library card and can be accessed at home. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, counsel?
Thank you.
No, thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it. Next, we'll move to the Loomis Chamber of Commerce Update. Ashley?
Hello? Switching it up, maybe you couldn't be here tonight. All right, but you did give me some good notes. Eggplant Festival is officially back on. We are partnering with the town and their support. Thank you. Wes, Wes helped out a lot and worked really hard to make this happen as well, so we're really looking forward to, to that event. Applications for vendors are online right now, and we're very excited. Our monthly events, the Monthly Coffee Connection is right here in the Train Depot, first Thursday of the month at 8:00 AM. Anybody is welcome to join us, and we really do a, a great presentation, and then Wes gives us an update on the town and is open for questions there as well. Our mixer this month is a combo ribbon cutting with one of our newest members, Skin Love by Jen. That's gonna be on August 17th at 5:30. And then, our last town concert of the season is this Friday. We have a, I think it's Pat Benatar, Stevie Nicks. Woo! So it's gonna be a combo. We're very excited. And it won't be too hot, so we hope to see you guys there. Any questions?
No. Counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Next, we'll move to the Partner Agencies' Update. I believe Deputy Billidoo is here.
We missed you last time.
Trumped the mic a little bit from here, but I'll, I'll kick it over to him in a minute. Sure. Good evening to the council and staff and those in attendance, as well as those watching online. My name's Josh Schindl, Lieutenant with the Placer County Sheriff's Office and Station Commander here around the block here. I think I was able to address the board last time, but I just kind of wanted to go over, I just wanted to kind of go over a couple, go over our stats real quick. I know Jeff usually goes over them, but I just wanted to go over them with you first, and then also address one other little point, then I'll kick it over to Jeff for a little bit more, some more things that are in the weeds there. So obviously, all incidents, we had 247, 30 reports were taken, transit-related activity was down to just 10. Of the citizen calls versus deputy-initiated, initiated activity, approximately 64% was citizen-initiated versus 36% unviewed or deputy-initiated. The priority calls, they speak for themselves right there, but the majority of, if you see is priorities twos, threes, and fours. Our priority two is something that's in progress, but it doesn't rise to a level where there's an immediate threat of a bodily injury or something like that. So that's good news here, if, if most of our work is in priority two or lower, that's good news for the town, obviously. Incident disposition, we only had four arrests, agency assist was 10, we issued 14 citations, 21 of our, 121 of our contacts ended in no crime, could have been just a, they got waved down for directions, it could have been they saw somebody they thought was suspicious or responding to a call for service and saw somebody, and it just was a big nothing burger. So that was 121, and then we had 11 false alarm calls, and then as you see, continuing down there, 15 calls suspicious person or activity, 13 disturbance calls, which could have been loud music, it could be neighbors arguing, it could be anything of that nature, 15 alarm calls, and again, if 11 were false, and then 52 traffic stops altogether. So that's our stats right there. Before I kick it over to Deputy Billidoo, I also wanted to kind of address something was planning on looking to move elsewhere, and I can tell you, that's far from the truth. We, we expand in our little strip mall over there if we can, and we'll continue to expand if we can. We have some, some facility projects to try and upgrade that place. I was at the station there when we upgraded it, however many years ago, and we were using the backside, a little corner office for the summer, so we have some, an ambitious agenda to improve it even more so, upgrade our gym, upgrade our locker room, upgrade our briefing room, all of that to sustain a, I don't want to say a big event, but a larger event. I know post-2020, we used it as a briefing area for area events, I'll just say that, and, so we're looking to just kind of up the ante. So far from, it's the opposite. We're, we're not going anywhere. We love our location, it's central to our needs for South Placer, not just Loomis, but also Granite Bay, West Roseville, rural Lincoln, Thunder Valley, you name it, on and on and on. So I just wanted to address that real quick, and if there's any questions, I'd entertain it. If not, I will kick it over to Jeff, who's gonna go more into, with school starting and kind of some things we have on, on, on the books for that there, so.
Questions?
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
I feel like everyone stole my thunder today. Everyone's talking about all this, all the topics that I was gonna bring up. So first of all, apologize for not being at the last meeting. I was on vacation, but I was competing in the United States Police and Fire Olympics, which was held in, no cops needed. But I was out of town representing the town, representing the sheriff's office, came home with two golds and three silvers, so.
Congratulations.
I gotta, I gotta keep going, stay young, keep up with everybody here, so. Anyway, so, like, like we brought up, the schools, we've been in works with them for, since I took over the position. I, I'm super pleased with how well we have moved forward with, including Del Oro now and the elementary schools, and this, this ambitious, ambitious traffic study and trying to improve traffic. So I think we're headed in the right direction, super happy about that. We've had numerous meetings in offices and onsite to try to address the traffic-related issues. Just some updates with the sheriff's office, I know we have already covered this, but all deputies now have been given body-worn cameras, that's a project that the sheriff's office has been working on, so deputies should all be wearing these, these new cameras, state-of-the-art cameras, so kind of a cool thing. Currently in the works, we have phones being issued to us that have more state-of-the-art technology, have fingerprint readers that we can instantly read someone's fingerprint to get their identity on, you know, at our fingertips with a phone, so it's pretty cool stuff. Other than that, Eggplant Festival, we're moving dead ahead on that, and National Night Out, I'll finish with that. What a huge success. From the sheriff's office standpoint, law enforcement standpoint, it was, it was huge. We, which I think the purpose was for this event to take place, which is to get everyone out of their homes and out of their cars, including law enforcement personnel, and being able to communicate and talk and meet people, say hi to the kids, say hi to the community, and be able to really just get to a human interaction base, and I, I think in that level, it was a, a huge success. So I'll leave it with that. If there's any questions, please shoot. Go right ahead.
Deputy, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, we'll move to public comment for items not on the agenda. This time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the Town Council on subjects that are not on the agenda. The audience should be aware that the council may not discuss details or vote on your non-agenda items. Please note that the audience will be allotted time to make public comments on any item on the agenda at the time that is heard. The time allotted for each person to speak is three minutes, and we have a series of lights to let you know where you are in, while you're speaking, and they're displayed right here up front. The green light is, of course, when your time begins, the yellow light will signify that you have a few seconds left, so that's your clue to wrap it up, and then, of course, the red light will win, is when your time is up. And so, with that, let us open for public comment, items not on the agenda.
And then, I'm just going to go ahead and remind, I just need your name, and you don't have to give me your address, if you give me your street name, that would be great, but that doesn't have to be any, any deeper than that, all right? Thanks.
Hi, my name is Alicia Watkins. I live on Main Street. I grew up in a town not much bigger than Loomis. Locals helped one another regardless of political beliefs. When we moved to Dutch Flat, it was no different there. I volunteered for the Fourth of July Parade, I served at the Pancake Breakfast for the Odd Fellows and Rebekas, and I graduated eighth grade in a class of 16 people. I was born and raised living the small-town life. Community isn't just helping one another, it's protecting your home from threats and violence. When certain government officials of Loomis validate bigotry, they betray their constituents and put innocent lives in danger. Loomis is blessed to be the home of queer support system that has saved the lives of many children and taught many families how to live with peace and joy. Despite the lies, attacks, threats, stalking, and violence, The Landing Spot continues to promote empathy. Multiple investigations done by law enforcement and investigative law firms have proven that none of the fallacious accusations held any merit, yet this hate endures. This hate has been around for generations. This hate caused the deaths of many innocent people during the fascist scourges of World War II and the communism that occurred in Russia and China, and the same falsehoods are being applied today. When council members celebrate violence against the queer community, they promote terrorism, not patriotism. The people promoting this hate here now call themselves Christians, but they follow Christ in name only, not in deed. Many churches, businesses, elected officials, and community organizations stand by the lifesaving work of The Landing Spot. They do this because ensuring children are safe and supported is the most important aspect of community. The people of Placer County are tired of manipulations, they are tired of hateful agendas and partisan bickering. What the people of Loomis and Placer and California and the whole United States of America want is honesty, compassion, and prosperity. This council is here to serve all of its constituents, not just those they deem worthy of empathy. It's time for certain board members to live up to their oath or vacate their positions. Thank you for your time.
My name's Pam Blake. I live on Angelo Drive, and I wasn't gonna speak about this, but since she brought it up, I'm gonna speak. I know of The Landing Spot because I had a relative in high school that lived in another town come to The Landing Spot, you know, down here. So I know of it. My brother-in-law would drop off my nephew there. He'd take off, and then I'd get a call from my nephew to come pick him up and take him home. And so, I look at it as a really great program for kids. I don't like to use those, all those LG whatever, queer whatever, but it was helpful to him and my sister and brother-in-law, you know, when he was going through this and attending when he was in high school, so, thank you.
My name is Rebecca Gollwing. I live on Tedsbury Road in Loomis. I have been a Loomis resident for 28 years.
Disturbance calls, which could have been loud music, it could be neighbors arguing, it could be anything of that nature, fifteen alarm calls, and again, if eleven were false, and then fifty-two traffic stops altogether. So, that's our stats right there. Before I kick it over to Deputy Billido, I also wanted to kind of address something I'd heard, not a lot, but just a rumor here and there, that the sheriff's office was, was planning on looking to move elsewhere. And I can tell you, that's far from the truth. We, we expand in our little strip mall over there if we can, and we'll continue to expand if we can. We have some, some facility projects to try and upgrade that place. I was at the station there when we upgraded it, however many years ago, and we're using the backside of Little Corner Office for the summer. So, we have some, an ambitious agenda to improve it even more so, upgrade our gym, upgrade our locker room, upgrade our briefing room, all of that to sustain a, I don't want to say a big event, but a larger event. I know post 2020, we used it as a briefing area for area events, I'll just say that. And so, we're looking to just kind of up the ante. So, far from, it's the opposite. We're not going anywhere. We love our location. It's central to our needs for South Placer, not just Loomis, but also Granite Bay, West Roseville, rural Lincoln, Thunder Valley, you name it, on and on and on. So, I just wanted to address that real quick, and if there's any questions, I'd entertain it. If not, I will kick it over to Jeff, who's going to go more into school starting and kind of some things we have on, on, on the books for that there. So, okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Feel like everyone stole my thunder today. Everyone's talking about all this, all the topics that I was going to bring up. So, first of all, I apologize for not being at the last meeting. I was on vacation, but I was competing in the United States Police and Fire Olympics, which was held in, no cops needed. But I was out of town representing the town, representing the sheriff's office. I came home with two golds and three silvers.
Congratulations.
I gotta, I gotta keep going, stay young, keep up with everybody here. So, anyway, so, like, like we brought up, the schools, we've been in works with them for, since I took over the position. I'm super pleased with how well we have moved forward with, including Del Oro now, and the elementary schools, and this, this ambitious, ambitious traffic study, and trying to improve traffic. So, I think we're headed in the right direction. Super happy about that. We've had numerous meetings in offices and on-site to try to address the traffic-related issues. Just some updates with the sheriff's office. I know we have already covered this, but all deputies now have been given body-worn cameras. That's a project that the sheriff's office has been working on. So, deputies should all be wearing these, these new cameras, state-of-the-art cameras, so kind of a cool thing. Currently in the works, we have phones being issued to us that have more state-of-the-art technology, have fingerprint readers that we can instantly read someone's fingerprint to get their identity on, you know, at our fingertips with a phone. So, it's pretty cool stuff. Other than that, Eggplant Festival, we're moving dead ahead on that. And National Night Out, I'll finish with that. What a huge success. From the sheriff's office standpoint, law enforcement standpoint, it was, it was huge. We, which I think the purpose was for this event to take place, which is to get everyone out of their homes and out of their cars, including law enforcement personnel, and being able to communicate and talk, and meet people, say hi to the kids, say hi to the community, and be able to really just get to a human interaction base. And I, I think in that level, it was a huge success. So, I'll leave it with that. If there's any questions, please shoot. Go right ahead.
Deputy, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, we'll move to public comment for items not on the agenda. This time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the town council on subjects that are not on the agenda. The audience should be aware that the council may not discuss details or vote on your non-agenda items. Please note that the audience will be allotted time to make public comments on any item on the agenda at the time that is heard. The time allotted for each person to speak is three minutes, and we have a series of lights to let you know where you are while you're speaking. And they're displayed right here up front. The green light is, of course, when your time begins. The yellow light will signify that you have a few seconds left, so that's your clue to wrap it up. And then, of course, the red light will win, is when your time is up. And so, with that, let us open for public comment, items not on the agenda.
And then, I'm just going to go ahead and remind. I just need your name, and you don't have to give me your address. If you give me your street name, that would be great, but that doesn't have to be any, any deeper than that, all right? Thanks.
Hi, my name is Alicia Watkins. I live on Main Street. I grew up in a town not much bigger than Loomis. Locals helped one another regardless of political beliefs. When we moved to Dutch Flat, it was no different there. I volunteered for the Fourth of July Parade. I served at the Pancake Breakfast for the Odd Fellows and Rebecca's, and I graduated eighth grade in a class of sixteen people. I was born and raised living the small-town life. Community isn't just helping one another, it's protecting your home from threats and violence. When certain government officials of Loomis validate bigotry, they betray their constituents and put innocent lives in danger. Loomis is blessed to be the home of queer support system that has saved the lives of many children and taught many families how to live with peace and joy. Despite the lies, attacks, threats, stalking, and violence, The Landing Spot continues to promote empathy. Multiple investigations done by law enforcement and investigative law firms have proven that none of the fallacious accusations held any merit. Yet, this hate endures. This hate has been around for generations. This hate caused the deaths of many innocent people during the fascist scourges of World War II and the communism that occurred in Russia and China, and the same falsehoods are being applied today. When council members celebrate violence against the queer community, they promote terrorism, not patriotism. The people promoting this hate here now call themselves Christians, but they follow Christ in name only, not in deed. Many churches, businesses, elected officials, and community organizations stand by the lifesaving work of The Landing Spot. They do this because ensuring children are safe and supported is the most important aspect of community. The people of Placer County are tired of manipulations. They are tired of hateful agendas and partisan bickering. What the people of Loomis, and Placer, and California, and the whole United States of America want is honesty, compassion, and prosperity. This council is here to serve all of its constituents, not just those they deem worthy of empathy. It's time for certain board members to live up to their oath or vacate their positions. Thank you for your time.
My name's Pam Blake. I live on Angelo Drive, and I wasn't gonna speak about this, but since she brought it up, I'm gonna speak. I know of The Landing Spot because I had a relative in high school that lived in another town come to The Landing Spot, you know, down here. So, I know of it. My brother-in-law would drop off my nephew there. He'd take off, and then I'd get a call from my nephew to come pick him up and take him home. And so, I look at it as a really great program for kids. I don't like to use those, all those LG whatever, queer whatever, but it was helpful to him and my sister and brother-in-law, you know, when he was going through this, and attending when he was in high school. So, thank you.
My name is Rebecca Galwin. I live on Tedsbury Road in Loomis. I have been a Loomis resident for twenty-eight years. I was a band booster parent at Loomis Elementary and later at Del Oro. I play in the Loomis Community Orchestra. I have volunteered at the library. I've been on your runs and rides. I, I love this community, and I hope to never leave it. I was disturbed earlier to see an offensive meme posted on Councilwoman Cortez's Facebook page. It showed, as was earlier described, a figure wrapped in the symbols and colors of a flag, karate kicking, another figure draped in pride colors. So, the message of that was clear. It had an American symbol kicking a pride symbol. So many things wrong about that, but what I would just like to say is that it was not kind, it was not community-oriented, and I would like to argue that it was not patriotic because it misused the colors and symbols of our flag that we hold so dear. And I would ask that you be mindful of your position as a leader in the community, to understand that you lead all members of this community. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Rachel Halverson, and I live on Magnolia. I know a lot of your faces up here. I have been the garden docent for Loomis Grammar School and for Placer Food Bank. I have been the winner of the Eggplant Festival Cooking Contest many times. I have done a lot of community volunteering, PTC with OFER, LGS, Del Oro. I've had four kids go through Del Oro. I'm currently homeschooling because my daughter is not your typical student, and she got bullied, and we got tired of it. So, this climate in Loomis sucks. It sucks. This is not like, the small town's supposed to be like a big family, but sometimes family has toxic members, and this is crappy. Like, the things that The Landing Spot do for that small marginal community, it's powerful and it's important. And by being hateful to any of your constituents, you're alienating people like myself who do a lot of good in your community, and who do a lot of good everywhere, you know? Nobody's hurting you by existing, but what you're doing is harmful to them. There's actually no fact-based evidence that Casey ever did anything wrong. So, like, he shouldn't be on, he shouldn't be on trial here. And he has been, and he's been exonerated in that very public statement that you made. You have yet to make a public statement, taking it back and saying, "I was wrong. I apologize." And to that small, minute, smaller-than-a-one-percent of you that make up my constituency, you matter, and being part of our community matters. And I'd like to see you make that statement. And I am someone who just watches YouTube. I have a kid on the spectrum, can't come down here. But seeing this, I'm a non-Christian. I don't go to any church, but if you're someone who wants to help someone, and you're in my community, like, you deserve to be here. And so, you need to say that you were wrong. And thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Carrie Phantham. I've lived here in Loomis for the past eight years. Oh, I live on Rimrock Circle. I am an active member of our community, including as a former employee of the Loomis Senior Life Center, a member of the Loomis Basin United Church of Christ, and a participant in a number of community initiatives throughout Placer County. I'm here because I was recently made aware of one of our town council members posting of a violent disrespectful meme on social media. Town councils should be representing everyone in town, no matter their sexual orientation or gender identity. What was posted by Ms. Cortez was disrespectful and disparaging to our LGBT community. My hope is that Ms. Cortez can learn from people speaking out here, to be more inclusive and aware of the diversity here in Loomis. There are gay people in Loomis, and Ms. Cortez, you represent them too. I understand, Ms. Cortez, that you are Christian, as am I. My Jesus wants us to love everyone, not to make violent gestures and jokes towards others. The internet is real life, and what you say there matters. When you are a public figure, you're in a position where people listen to what you say and post. Be careful of your words. Council, thank you for your time.
Dave Dally, Delmar Avenue. I was hoping nobody would bring this subject up, but since the subject was brought up, this is my view of it. Nobody has been exonerated on this, okay? This pastor, or this fake pastor, who is grooming children, and if you look at the, and if you look at the Veritas interview, it's not been doctored. Nobody said the Veritas interview is false, okay? And these people up here, they're entitled to their own opinion, and if you don't like it, that's too bad. Ms. Cortez could post whatever she wants to. That's her First Amendment right. Nobody's going to take that away from anybody on this board or in this audience. Just because you don't like, you don't like what we don't like, that gives you no right to say that what we're doing is wrong. That ain't gonna happen. And that fake pastor, who you keep protecting, if you listen to his, the interview he did, he spoke freely. He spoke freely. Nobody told him what to say. Nobody held a gun to his head. And like he said, "If the parents knew what I was doing, they wouldn't let their kids around me." And I hope nobody lets her kids around this guy. Don't start, because you guys are gonna get a fight that you guys ain't gonna want. Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, really.
Order, order.
Matthew Oliver. I'm from Rockland, had three kids go through Del Oro High School. But I know that our communities matter, and our communities, Rockland, Loomis, Lincoln, Roseville, they work together. So, one council member, Mayor, I want to say thank you for an opportunity to address you this evening. And I also just want to take a moment to say thank you. Thank you for helping establish a community that does not cater to the ideology or one single ideology or people group, but thank you for advocating for unity. Thank you for putting our children and the families as a priority over the politicized and weaponized agenda of a few. Thank you for standing up and speaking up when so many others have stayed silent. And thank you for truly leading. You have helped make Loomis a great place to live, to raise a family, and to be a part of. During the pandemic, I received many letters, and one powerful letter I think is worth reading, just a snippet of today, came from a young lady who was in the Air Force stationed at Beal Air Force Base. She started the letter by stating that she lives an alternative lifestyle. She said that she is a lesbian. Later in the letter, she wrote this. "Mr. Oliver, though you and I may disagree on many issues, one thing we can agree on is this great nation. I didn't join the Air Force to protect one people group, to create safe spaces for some, or to fight for a few. I joined the armed forces to protect and serve for all. I didn't need a separate flag. I have a flag. I serve under one flag, the United States of America, and that flag represents me and you united. There are some out there that agree with my lifestyle, yet try to use it as a reason to divide, separate, and turn people against one another. They are messengers of hate. Their goal is chaos and division. As we are both people who serve our communities and this nation, I encourage you not to give in to their cultural Marxism and fascism. Today, I urge you, city council members of Loomis, to continue that fight of unity, to stand with integrity, and not to give in to those who desire to sow chaos, to bring division, and to not give in to their cultural Marxism. Thank you."
Folks, I want to make it clear that when we applauded earlier for Deputy Billido and his gold medals and silver medal that he won, that was appropriate. But during public comment, applauding is not appropriate. And the reason why is because it can chill the, the speech of those who may follow. So, I'd ask you that you refrain from clapping or catcalling or any such. Just be, please be quiet and let people speak, and everyone will get their three minutes. Thank you. And we are still open for public comment.
Hi, everyone. My name's Bonnie London. I live on Shady Canyon Court. Frankly, I didn't come here for this, and I'm very, very sad. I have seen the best of Loomis when Loomis comes together. We are a small town. I think that everybody shares a lot of common values. We want to make this town the best place it can be for everybody. And so, I would like for our leaders to be promoting unity, promoting having our community grow strong and together, not divided. Because when we're divided, we are easy to conquer, and we are small. What I am actually trying to let you guys know about is that Placer County is having a rezoned program town hall on August ninth, I believe that's tomorrow night. And why that's important to us is because there is expansive growth happening throughout our region. And Loomis Incorporated, because we wanted to keep that growth measured and balanced. That's not happening outside of our borders. And so, they have sites that they are upzoning to thirty dwelling units per acre. That's quite a lot. They're all on our borders. So, I would like for our council to be paying attention and doing their job to represent our constituents, our town, and preserving our, our community in the way that we all love it, which is a kind one that is accepting and respectful. Thank you.
I didn't know if I had to fill something out first or anything. Okay. Hello, my name's Charlie Simons. I live in the Mag Seven Ranch in Loomis. And this won't take long. I hear again and again, people talking about Jesus being all about love, acceptance, love everybody. But He also taught us to hate evil. Ephesians chapter five, verse 11. Be no part of evil, but instead expose it. That's what Project Veritas did. I thank God for that. That was one of James O'Keefe's last projects before he got removed by his own folks. Be that as it may, I was stunned that it happened in this town that I love so much, that we had a man of God, as Paul said often in his writings. He literally called those kind of people so-called Christians. That's the wording he used. And I will put it this way, when it comes to Jesus being all about love, it was Jesus Himself who said, "If anyone causes any of these young ones to sin or stumble, it would be better for them to have a millstone tied around their neck, and that they be cast into the sea." That's the Jesus that I worship, Saint Jesus, fashioned a whip of cords and drove out money changers at the temple, that Saint Jesus. So, sometimes, you gotta take a stand against evil, and I learned that from my own Lord, that you gotta take a stand against evil. You can't be quiet. And even if it's done in a lighthearted way, like Mrs. Cortez did by posting that, the gentleman earlier who said it's her First Amendment rights, absolutely correct. And I'll just leave with this. I say to the homosexual community, you can do whatever you want with your own stupid adult body, but the moment you start jacking with kids, you have a whole new set of problems. I won't tolerate it. I won't stand it. And that's what this meeting place is, that's been under the guise of lying to parents, lying to even school administrators, lying to school boards about it even being in place. And so many places, and even on school campuses, completely unacceptable. And I think you've done an extraordinary thing, and I want to congratulate you for it, and thank you.
Folks, please, don't, don't clap. Carol, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Am I on? Okay. Hi, thank you, council members and, and everyone else. My name is Nicole, and I just wanted to say for the council members and the mayor, I love Loomis. I love, I don't live there, but I, we, I go there frequently. We have, a lot of our favorite places are in Loomis. I love the way the Loomis town is always so inviting, and such, I love the small-town feel. I'm very grateful to the city council for making this a place where everyone feels at home and welcome, and I think y'all are doing a wonderful job. And I grew up in a small town, and so, I appreciate all the hard work y'all go through to make sure that this is an amazing town. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tim Ondurco, Town of Loomis. So, I appreciate the comments today, this evening, and I just want to point out that, you know, first of all, I have nothing against the LBGQ community. I believe everyone has the right to express theirselves the way they want. But I, I just need to point out, I find it quite ironic that people came out today, tonight, to talk about their, their rage or their problem with a Facebook post that was made. But I heard nothing from any of those people. When the comments from this so-called pastor came out, he said, he thought he wasn't, he thought he was talking confidentially, that he had no problem promoting hormone therapy to children, mentoring, sexually mentoring children. He talked, he talked vividly about talking about gender identity with children at a young age, behind parents' backs, as if he was bragging about doing it when parents weren't around. I heard nothing from any of those people about that kind of behavior. In fact, those people are defending that behavior tonight. And it'd be nice if they were consistent. It's like, are we upset about a Facebook page, or are we, are we really concerned about that kind of conduct being, being done behind parents' backs with young children? I mean, where are the priorities of people these days? I don't know. It doesn't make sense to me. Facebook is, you know, you have the freedom to look at another person's page if you want. You don't have to look at her page. But, you know, when it comes down to priorities and what matters most, it's, you know, to me, it's the kids and what they're exposed to. And if people would get their priorities straight, it would make a lot more sense. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me now? Okay. I wasn't anticipating speaking. I'm unable to attend because of mobility issues, but I am a retired teacher. And it grieves and appalls me to have to... And it grieves and appalls me to have to address you and the community of Loomis, but I can't stay silent when I witnessed an elected official spread hate speech, especially when she chairs the committee that serves as the council's liaison to our local schools. Take a good look at that post that Alicia was holding up that was posted by Amanda Cortez. It is hate speech, pure and simple. And Ms. Cortez, I wish you could look me in the eye and tell me how you could explain this face-to-face to a 12-year-old queer student there in Loomis. You are responsible for ensuring that this child's environment, not only at school but in the community, is safe physically, emotionally, and spiritually. Instead, you create a dangerously hateful environment. You have no defense. You have consistently surrounded yourself and allied yourself with bigots and hate-mongers who have maligned, defamed, libeled, and tried to destroy members of the LGBTQ community. Your goal of forcing your extremist, right-wing religious agenda will not be tolerated. You and your ilk will be held accountable in court for those hateful actions. It's time for you to be removed from your office. It's time for voters to see you for who you are and to end your toxic rhetoric. My 13-year-old grandson wanted to be there to confront you himself, but I don't trust you not to spew your hate at him. You'll try to argue that this was your personal page, and you have a right to free speech. But you and this council have a responsibility to all community members, not just the ones that share your hate. As Maya Angelou told us on more than one occasion, "When someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time." Your hate will be defeated, and love and respect will prevail. Take a good look at this and then begin the process of removing this hate. Loomis deserves better. And please be advised that those of you that continue to defame and malign Pastor Casey are now clearly subject to prosecution. Thank you.
Carol, is there any more on Zoom? With that, we will close public comment for items not on the agenda. Next, we'll move to the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion unless an audience member or a council member requests otherwise, in which case the item will be removed for separate consideration. Does anyone in the audience want to pull an item from the consent calendar? Counsel? All right, may I have a motion to adopt the consent?
I give a motion.
I second.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Youngblood?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Cartwright?
Aye.
Next, we'll move to business item number 11. I recognize Jenny wanted to say something.
I think you're gonna say something first.
I was gonna queue it up, but Jenny, if you'd like to go first, go for it.
No, no, you queue it up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. I'm filling in for Merrill, who's on a much-needed vacation. So I'm gonna pretend to be the town engineer tonight for you. And kind of go through a report on the activity that's related to this economic development sign that was brought forward, which started in 2016. Council directed staff to hire a consultant to do the design for the monument sign, which would be at Taylor Road and Sierra College. Staff did that work. And then in March of 2017, the town executed a lease agreement with Union Pacific, because where the location where the sign was wished to be is on Union Pacific land. So we now have a lease agreement for that space. And I assume through COVID and other various things that the, the project kind of did not move forward until recently in December, the sign kind of got picked up. The, we had COSA engineer redo the, the design structure standards to make sure they meet today's standards in this situation. And the scope of the work consisted of building the structure with a concrete footing to 14 feet long and 10 feet high, dimensions approved under the lease agreement. So that's, that's important to know, that the size of the sign is very, is within the lease agreement with UP. We can't make it any bigger, larger. We can't add electrical wiring to it. That's why the project is proposing solar lighting on the back end of it. Concurrently with the final, the design structure portion of the project, the Chamber of Commerce, the town staff met as part of an economic development committee with Ken Teichman, who is a consultant with Solus Graphics, to discuss design options for the graphics, lettering, and lighting that would make up the interior portion of the sign. The final recommendations from the committee is what you see tonight in Exhibit C. And on July 18th, staff put out the bid for the structure design or construction of the, the sign coming forward. We received four proposals. JS Construction was the lowest bidder in that project. So with that, what we're asking for is the council to appropriate $55,000. And that would be needed to award for the JS West construction in the amount of $38,000 to build the sign structure, and Solus Graphics in the amount of $12,300 to design and construct the interior portion of the sign. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jenny and Ashley if they have additional comments that they want to provide. And then Ken Teichman is actually gonna do a short presentation on the interior sign design.
Okay, so thank you. I realize that through my time at the chamber and on the parking rec, I've been through four town managers and one interim manager. So this actually is a, not a welcome sign, more as a, a sign that would create people to, to be interested in Loomis, to come into Loomis, to shop into Loomis. It's gonna have some features that will allow us to advertise Eggplant Festival and other things on that corner of Sierra College and Taylor. And if you sit at that corner on the Sierra College and Taylor, it's a, it's a great spot to have. So this has been on, so I said, I think, been on since, actually, 2015, when I went through, back through, we started talking about it then. And it was on the 2015-2016 strategic planning. And it was number three, and I'll just read it to you. "Brand Loomis as a historical destination and small-town experience. Signage on borders to direct businesses and people to town. Involve the historical society and the chamber with town branding." That's exactly what we did. And we brought that back. We brought branding back and, as a chamber, I'm sorry, as a chamber, we brought that back. And so in 2016, an update on that, they approved the murals that we did around town. They applied, they applied for the lease of the Union Pacific property entrance signage and anticipated a lease by April 1st, 2016, but, and install in 2016, June. But it didn't get, that didn't happen. So then in 2017, there was a resolution done on a consent item for the town council, Town of Loomis, to adopt a resolution approving a lease with Union Pacific Railroad for, uh, property at the corner of Taylor Road and Sierra College Boulevard for a civic sign board. Then flash forward, the chamber then went out and tried to get bids from contractors between the 2017, 2018, 2019. And it was, I, I talked to several of them. It just didn't, just couldn't find one that would, that could do it. So then COVID hit, and then we come to 2021 and 2026 strategic plan. It says, "Continue the branding efforts." So then in 2021, it was brought back and discussed, and we went back to the Economic Development Committee. That's when Ashley and the Economic Development Committee came back in, me as a liaison from the town. I just think that, oh, then we had to bring it back to the railroad to get the redrawings that you just talked about. And I think it got missed for a couple of reasons. I think it just got, went through the cracks. I also think we were saving libraries back then, and we were doing downtown renovations, and all kinds of things happened during that timeframe. But I really believe in this sign, and I'm happy to hear, I'm looking forward to hearing Ken's presentation on it. Did you want to add anything, Ashley, at this time?
No, I think it's perfect.
Okay.
Ken, if you'll come up and present the design to the audience and the council, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor, council members. Let's see. So how do we progress with the slides? I just. So we have the, we have the open lot here, which is a great intersection of Taylor and Sierra College. And the, I wanted to break down a little bit of the elements on that. The main text that is, we're using is called Melma Crack Normal. And the size of the "We Love Loomis" circle is 19 and 1/2 inches, to give you a size perspective. The, the letters of Discover are 8 and 1/2 inches, and the, the letters of the, of Loomis is 23. The, the side sign letters, which we'll see later, I'll just go back into that later on then. Okay, you can go to the next slide if you want. Okay, here we go. The, the side sign letters, the art brewery, shopping, dining, and events are, are going to be vinyl on a aluminum vinyl substrate. And that enables these to be easily changed out if you wanted to change events or certain things that you want to change there without the construction, fabrication of the aluminum letters, which are constructed in a way by installing posts into the planks. And then the planks are held by an aluminum frame, which is sandwiching it together. And the planks we're using are 2x12s. So that's all going to be constructed in, in metal and wood and fabricated to fit the structure after it's built. Let's see. And you see the phases there, the construction. One of the other aspects here is that the original drawing showed the solar panels on the north side of the structure. So in order to get the proper sunlight on that, we're going to build a, an additional bracketing on the top to get the solar panels to face the south. Because in the wintertime, it's just not gonna do the job. It's not gonna power the batteries. So that's, that's something that's added to that. And then I guess you go to the next slide? And so anyway, this is the mounting. This is basically what I was showing you here. This is a quarter-inch aluminum. And as, as mostly aluminum is anodized, but anodized aluminum doesn't last under ultraviolet very long. And this is a southern exposure. So a better choice on this is gonna be baked enamel. So it just is, just gonna work a lot better. This'll be gray in a year if it's anodized. It's just too much ultraviolet. And let's see, you can go on to the next one if you want. And then the lighting system. And to break down a lighting system, this is a lighting system that's gonna power a lot more than what just it is to light the sign. It consists of five, five-watt LEDs, two 120-watt solar panels, and then two 79 amp-hour batteries. It's got a steel locking case to protect those batteries and a controller that has a remote control, so you can set your time and all the different things and how you want to have the lighting done. The, the system has a 10-year warranty, and it's 20 years on, on the panels. So you can do the next slide. The one nice thing about this is that it's got enough wattage in the wintertime to put a nice display out. You can put whatever you can think of. You can put Christmas trees or, or Santa in a sleigh or any kind of message you want to put out for the holiday season, or any, any one of your holidays. Like, we've, we've done different, I've done different municipalities, like in Colfax, where we put on for Halloween, different colors and, you know, different things like that. It really affords that really well. And then, go ahead and go to the last slide if you want. So there's the basic look of the sign, is, is how it looks without the menu bar below that, of course. But anyway, so I'll, I'll ask if there's any questions.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may add a little bit, if you don't mind?
Sure.
I think the Economic Development Committee, when we, we were looking at the text and all that, really wanted to create that synergy between the "We Love Loomis" sign and font and everything else into this, this sign itself, that, which kind of incites branding, right? In a, in a way, so that we're consistently putting the message and representing what Loomis is through the, the visual aid on there. And that's kind of, and if I'm misspeaking, Jenny or Ashley, please let me know. But I think that's kind of how we wound up with the, the type of font you have and the way it's laid out and incorporated in the "We Love Loomis" as part of the finishing touch on there. It's almost the, the dot of the eye, right? On the back end of it.
And I, and I just have one more thing to add, I meant to add. It's supposed to look like a fruit shed, so it's to, to go all the way down. And then when you, when you find, when you know that Costco's going in and they have a retaining wall, and in their retaining wall, they're putting fruit labels, it just kind of flows and matches all the way down.
Wow, congratulations on that.
Yeah, it's very clever.
Good job.
Yep. Does anyone have any questions for Ken? All right. Thank you, Ken.
Well, thank you all. Appreciate it. Look forward to building a fabulous sign face for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment about the new Loomis sign?
Gene Wilson, Barton Road. I think it, it's a really good idea. I like, I like it in general. The thing that strikes me is it looks kind of dull because there's no color to it. And when you think about all our fruit labels, they're very colorful. And I think this could be easily driven by and ignored because there's really no color to it. And I wondered if the committee had looked into color or there was something to be, you know, some explanation of why, why it's simply black and white with no color that might attract people more to look at it.
The color?
No, I, I think, I think one of the things you have to remember is that we have the murals around town, and one of the first things I heard is, is after they've been up for a couple of years, they fade.
Yes.
And they have to be touched up. When you, you go with what we chose here, to kind of keep it black and white, the maintenance is low on there, and it's, and it's designed to last forever. The metal components and the Trex or whatever, the backing's gonna be in there. And I think some of the lighting can, on there, can, you can change accents to what colors are gonna be. Or did you do the same design on light bar as well in that space?
The, the light bars are willing to produce a white light. Actually, it's a soft white light. But the contrast here is, you give the effect of, you know, the barn and the fence. Oh, should I come here?
Yeah.
Please.
Could we go back to that slide a bit? We, Jenny and Ashley and I and others spent considerable amount of time looking at different designs and styles of, of this, just the last one, number six or seven, I think. This one here. This sign has had, is gonna have a lot of character to it. That, you know, the biggest thing we tried to find was to have Loomis Town and not, you know, a city look, not a city sign. And because the nature of the, the planking behind it, and you can't tell from this picture, but you'll be able to see through the planking, there'll be gaps between that to really give it a sort of a fence look. Also, the, the contrast between black and white is gonna be the biggest, I mean, most obvious, easily recognizable message that you can get. And the fact that the side, the sides, again, you can't tell from this illustration too much, the side art brewery, shopping, dining, and events is going to be flatter. And Discover Loomis is gonna be popped off the face 3/4 of an inch. So you're gonna have a shadow effect with that also. So that's gonna also enrich that, as well as "We Love Loomis", it'll have a cast shadow behind that, too. So it's got a lot of dimensional art colors that go with this. And yes, you certainly could attract other colors. But when I look at this, the heart hits, hits me right away. You know, if you had other colors, you'd be detracted away to all kinds of other colors. There is lighting schemes we can do, and Wes had brought that up. We, we We, we can, I want to, um, install the first set of lights in there and see how they play on the sign at night. And then we can add lights to that to improve that. And there are different colored lights we can add to that. Uh, and they're reasonably, you know, inexpensive to, to, and the system has a lot of power to do that. So I hope I've addressed that before.
Just a question.
Sure.
Um, up in Auburn at the Historic Courthouse.
Ma'am, if you would come up to the microphone so everyone can hear you?
First of all, the, the sign is beautiful. I like that. So up in Auburn at the Historic Courthouse, they change the lights out frequently, but they don't actually change the bulbs out. They actually have color-changing light bulbs. So for Fourth of July, it's red, white and blue. St. Patrick's Day, Valentine's Day. Um, so the light change, you could easily achieve with like the LED color-changing things. And you could actually program them to change so you wouldn't have to do really any maintenance.
Right.
And LEDs are more power efficient and cheaper and longer lasting anyway. So there is an option to change the color of the lights without you having to worry about changing the bulbs out.
Right, right. Well, I, I installed a similar system to that that changes colors in Colfax.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that I'm familiar with that system. We can add light strands to this to do that for seasonal or event sorts of things.
Yeah.
That's why we're doing a system that has a lot of amperage to it.
Oh, perfect.
So that we can add fabulous colors and things if, if the season or the event calls for it.
I like that. I look forward to seeing it.
Me too.
One of, um, thank you, I'm actually, um, and I worked with, um,
Go ahead, say step one up.
... on this. Uh, one of the things that, that is really, um, important to us is that this really is for economic development. And so we wanted to keep this sign simple, but one of the things that we do have on the sign is in each of the corners, uh, where it says Discover Loomis, we are going to have, um, a place where we can string a banner up over the top of the sign that would cover the entire sign that could be used for advertising for events and for anything else that we might have going on in town, um, school events, anything. And it's a very big space. So we really wanted to make sure that we had something simple on it that would be great anytime so that we can change out the banner for events that we have in town that, um, to really advertise those. So I, that was really kind of what our, our drive was for this especially.
Linda Kelly, Loomis resident. Um, on this, uh, the placement of the sign on the property, first of all, the lease with the railroad, I guess it is.
Yes.
No one has said what that costs and it, pardon me? A year, a year? And is that money?
Yeah, $250 a year.
And is that money built into the $55,000 or?
No, that, that's an ongoing lease that we put, we itemize in the budget annually for economic development.
And how long will the railroad let us have that lease?
I think that's, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll have to look back, but the leases with UP are usually in perpetuity unless either party chooses to go opposite direction or they're, they're typically, if they're not that, they're usually either 20 years or 50 years.
Okay, that's good to know. And also, um, the picture at the very beginning where you showed where the location was going to be, that looks like it's before all the changes in that intersection with the, you know, changing of the roads, widening of the roads. So will that change the placement of where it's going to be on the property? Just wondering that.
It is my understanding it was placed in a location that would be outside those improvements in there, and that's why the, the location was chose where it is. It should be far, set far back enough that it won't, it won't be impacted.
Okay. I just know if there are certain setbacks to make sure that if we're going to widen the road, that it's not going to be too close.
Yeah, we're, we're not widening the crossing over the railroad tracks in there in the way.
Not over it, but before.
Right, a little bit, we're widening in there, but we're not, we're not going to encroach beyond the area that's kind of, that's already there very much.
Very much, okay.
It's, it's within the, um, the area that we need to keep it within. This, this will be set back perfectly where we need it.
Um, when you started the project back in 2015, you said, was there appropriate appropriation funds for it at that time? Was it $55,000 or was it a lot less back then?
Was it at that time?
Okay, so you didn't know what the cost initially would be or?
No.
Great questions.
I, I, sorry. That's why I'm on the planning commission.
Alright. Is there any further questions for Ken while we have him?
Well, thank you all.
Oh, great. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll close public comment on this item?
Excuse me, Dan. Danny, we've got, um, people on Zoom.
Oh, okay, sorry, then we will not close public comment.
She goes talk first, then I?
Yeah, well, Pam, Pam will go first and then we'll hit Zoom.
Hi, my name is Pam Blake. I've lived here for thirty-eight years and yesterday I was out, so this is my big question is we have this nice sign here that's a couple hundred, you know, this is a very nice sign, but we also have this sign that's a couple a hundred feet away from this new sign. Now, if I remember correctly, um, it was either a senior project or an Eagle Scout project to have, you know, this done. So I'm looking at the $55,000 as being excess money that we don't need to, to spend because we have this little sign, which I do believe represents, like it says, a small town and it, it represents us. Now, also out yesterday was this sign over by the Starbucks that says, Welcome to Loomis, State of Town Blue Goose, May 25th. Is that the chamber's responsibility? Because that's two months ago, uh, and there was talk, I believe, was it in December, about fixing this sign, fixing this sign, and then later on having to possibly move it to another location or a way after the subdivision went in. So, uh, this is outdated. We have people that come into town for high hand, uh, all the time. It's the parking on the street and everything. So I think it's a disgrace, even though it's broken, that this is not updated on a regular basis. It's got old information on it. Um, so I'd like to see the money being used, you know, to do this, fix this sign later after the subdivision, uh, comes up. And while you're at it, can you please add at the bottom or somewhere on there that the eggplant festival is October, uh, 7th? So, um, I'm just here to say vote no to cut our losses of the $55,000 and to use it later on to fix this sign because this has been brought up about it being broken and it does need to be fixed, but at a later, at a later time. So, uh, thank you very much.
Hi, Sonya Coupler, Tudoray, Loomis. Um, I am just curious, who will be responsible for changing the messaging on the sign and who will be responsible for maintaining the sign? Um, I'm assuming that's public works. The other concern that I have is, um, what, what is the protection on the sign as far as, um, someone that might, um, want to vandalize the sign? Is it locked? Is it, how, how is it secured? Thank you.
Ken, I'm sorry to have you back and forth.
I, I didn't get my walk-in today, so this is working out pretty good. Um, so there's a couple of protections. The, uh, the lags that are holding on the letters are very securely fastened, so the letters are not a problem. Uh, the battery and all the electrical conduits all is going to be steel and the batteries are going to be held into a locked box at steel. So, I mean, you know, no bank is impregnable, but I think this is pretty resistant. You know, if we've got somebody doing damage to it, they're going to have to be actively vandalizing it with some serious tools. It's not going to be something that a kid can just go pull parts off of.
Right.
So, and the, the planks are very sturdy and it'll be put together really strong. So, I mean, that's the best I can, I can offer on this. And that's true, I guess, with any sign.
Okay.
So. I hope I answered your question, wherever you are.
Jenny, did you have something?
No.
No? Okay. Alright, thank you, Ken. Carol, is there anyone else on Zoom? Okay. Alright, now, we will close public comment on this item.
We, we do have Miguel.
Okay.
Go ahead, Miguel.
Thank you. Uh, I guess if your name is Jukovic, you don't get called on sometimes. Um, I wanted to comment earlier, and my name was on the list, but it never got to me. I just wanted to compliment Carol on the great, uh, night out. It was unreal, fantastic. Uh, the attendance with, of families was really something else. And the attendance with our local, um, police department, fire department and everybody, it was one great event, as was mentioned. I was there, some of the council people were there. Really neat to see all the families in Loomis, a lot of young children. I got to meet some new, uh, people that lived in Sunrise, Loomis. Secondly, on the sign, I'm glad to see that you're going to be able to put up banners and talk about upcoming events. I think that's important. Um, the sign is beautiful, but it doesn't let people know what's going on in town. So if you can have banners there, uh, that would be greatly helpful. As far as existing chamber sign over by now, what is Starbucks? Yeah, it's pretty outdated. There's been some talk and hopefully follow-through about putting up an electronic billboard that could be changed on a daily or weekly basis. Putting up things that, uh, are happening in Loomis, either, uh, events or even business special events that businesses are happening. And one of the best ways to do that is with electronic billboard. So, uh, I like the billboard that you plan on putting like Sierra College and Taylor and hopefully you'll continue looking at an electronic billboard. Thank you.
While we're waiting for Carol, I, I just want to say what a wonderful job she's doing, adapting to doing the Zoom and the minutes and everything else at the same time. I really appreciate her taking that effort and, and helping out.
Okay. Are there any more left on Zoom, Carol? Okay. Then with that, we will close public comment. Jenny, I see your finger there. What's going on?
I haven't started, I'm going to vote.
Okay, I just, I didn't know if you had something to add.
No.
Okay, so we will close public comment on that item. And at this point, um, there really is no, uh, our, our action is to receive.
Dang it.
So there is no vote, but we can move on to council committee reports.
Danny, um, we, we are asking council to appropriate the, the $55,000 on there, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Yeah, there's a resolution for you guys, if you read through the recommendations.
Uh, duh, 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 okay. Hold on a second. You're right, I see it right now. Adopt resolution. Alright, my oversight. So do we have a motion to adopt resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution.
Okay.
I'll second. I just have one question. So they brought up the senior project. Are we going to keep that sign too or is that going away?
We're keeping that sign. That sign's more of a gateway sign. I mean, it, it indicates the, the beginning of Loomis theoretically in proximity. It has a separate purpose from what this sign's doing. This sign's more targeted towards the economic development.
Yes.
And I just figured I'd ask that because I know that that was brought up in public comments, so that way they would know that that sign's still going to be. So yeah, I'm voting to, I'm seconding the recommendation.
Carol?
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Councilmember Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Mayor Cartwright?
Aye. With that, we'll move to council committee reports. Jenny?
Um, the only meeting that I actually attended was, um, a Zoom meeting for the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. And the, it, it was interesting, they did a presentation in Marysville, kind of on how they're encouraging their infill projects and some of the incentives they're giving. And then we're going to go visit them this month and see them. So that's pretty much all that I have.
Okay. My meeting was canceled, so.
Um, so SP Mud, um, the word that I can't say, Wes, help me, strategic, oh, I did it, strategic, strategic plan. So, uh, I can never S and T, sometimes I can't, they get backwards, needs to like dyslexia, I don't know. Um, but they did go over the, that plan for the, the contractors and that such, you know, and they had a presentation. Um, but the main thing at the end of it was discussing the fact that they're going to have a two-by-two. So they announced that and they're going to coordinate that effort, I believe. Vice President Durfee and President Williams will be on the two-by-two and then obviously that'll get scheduled with us. Um, so they're going forward with actually meeting with the town of Loomis to try to work with us on, um, the proposed measures that they're going to have for SP Mud. So that's basically what they discussed, uh, this past week.
I don't have anything to report as of this time.
Okay.
Yeah, there was nothing specific that they brought up.
Alright. Then with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.